Call of order, roll call.
Um, please, and Rossy, and Roxy, and Rob, and now, and Justin, and Rossa.
Here.
And Zobbs.
Here.
And Stover.
Here.
Okay, we have no public carries tonight, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion for a pretty good agenda as presented.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, public comments on agenda? Uh, none. Approve of the minutes dated July 8, 2024.
Who's who approved it?
So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, no communications, old business, outdoor cafe dining or seating ordinance. Do we want to just shift the two and do new business first?
Okay.
Anybody? Good, or wait and see if anybody comes, shows up, I guess we could do the first one. Yeah? Okay, we'll do that. We'll do outdoor. Outdoor, we'll keep the ladies.
Okay.
Okay, outdoor cafe dining and seating ordinance. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Well, I just passed out as a printed copy of the Google Doc I've been kind of working from. Last time we discussed this, we had some concerns about cooking, about language for whole harmless or insurance language, as well as some other more specific criteria for defining these outdoor areas with like protective features, jersey barriers, or bowels, or other items and the like. So, just research, I actually found a really resource in Fairfax, Virginia, that had a pretty good ordinance, like, you know, with a couple other things, but it was still in Heights, as well as some like developed ordinance that had this type of regulation ordinance. So, if you're looking at this, I actually think there's several changes in here, so I'll go through them all. Number one, when it comes to the definition, previously specifically just said that any permitted use within general business or general business downtown district. I got a little bit more specific as I saw how other ordinances approached it, and I did feedback on this, but other ordinances follow that permitted restaurants, craft beverage, production establishments, or any other similar food establishments used in these districts. So, now we have to find that these are outdoor dining arenas for food establishments, not just like any store. So, it's just, it's a little more narrowly focused.
Do we have any restaurants outside of general business or general business downtown?
General business downtown.
What's the corner of 26 and Rachel? Only because I know he's looking to put in a restaurant there.
Um, it's still general business, or maybe general business on that corner. If it actually transitions to some like private, like industrial, something kind of area.
Yeah, it's general business.
Uh, where do you go to lay lay? I'm feeling about halfway now. This is all applicants who wish to install outdoor seating areas shall submit a site plan, proof of insurance, express written consent with the landlord slash owner, if not the applicant. It will not be permitted without review or approval from commission, et cetera. It lists out different village officials that it would have to go through just to make sure that there are proper safety, building safety, as well as fire safety reviews for that. So, that clause gets put in there. When it comes to the design and layout criteria, I broke it out a little bit more, so it's a little bit easier to read, and also added a couple of things just to bring some more clarification. Specifically, if you look at one, it talks about they shall be separate from parking in other common areas with a formal fence, and then goes into protective barriers, and specifically calls out bowels, jersey barriers, or other like permitted safety features deemed necessary by village building and public safety officials. So, it allows for like, if there is something else that shows up that's a better alternative, there's the ability to be a little more flexible for what that could be, so we can actually have that in there. And then it just goes on to what it said before with landscaping for that, that gives the planning permission some discretion in terms of what's acceptable. And then just has the reinforced phrasing that it needs to be complementary to the private building adjacent sites, so it just can't be completely just as, you know, sort of compared to everything else that's in the area. Other safety language that I pulled from Fairfax, Virginia, was that outdoor seating areas and non-destructive fire equipment, building actions present very marked or designated for emergency address or ADA accessibility or pedestrian passage on any trail or sidewalk. So, I thought that was a nice catch-all for just maintaining safe circulation. I also added number three, which says all tables, chairs, pillows, lighting, and other accessories must be temporary and removal. That would be enough to you in terms of if you want anything that will allow some of that, but I'm not sure that would necessarily be unless it's a report, concrete, or something or the other, but this allows it to be removed during off-season times and everything else. Number four, this is also something that is up for your discussion as well, but given the, there's been several different instances and explosions with these things, it prohibits outdoor heaters, and I also outlined any outdoor cooking feature or accessory. So, that kind of gets into, not a lot of necessarily people cooking outdoors, if it's not part of, let's say, a site that has previously proven as part of their use and power function as a, as a, as a business. Number five, this is another catch-all, which says the area must be kept free of trash, debris, and cooking hazards. Number six was interesting, where it's just saying that no signs are permitted in the outdoor seating area, nor may be affixed to any part of the structures of defining the outdoor space. That's another one that kind of, no feelings around that, but that was something that was included in several instances that I found in different examples. Number seven was what was previously there, that business needs to be reinforced with whatever the litter control commissioner requires for outdoor service of alcohol. And then A was also a previous draft, where it says no music or noise that could impact neighbors or adjacent properties and violate the village's laws on this. So, any comments to add to that?
I just had one. When we're doing this, are we putting the fire department departments as well and putting them in there? And I ask that because Dan was specifically telling me that we had that the entrances had to be ADA compliant and that there had to be two of them. Is that, are we solid with that?
So, that's where it does state that in terms of, there's a catch-all.
Is that further?
I think, and then if you look at what are the, you'll see that with number two.
Okay, cool.
Where it does kind of cover fire safety.
It's a bribe, okay.
And destructions, stuff like that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it'd be more specific or...
No, I agree that's enough language to give that as part of the process, and some discretion to fire safety.
So, they can have a fixed ornamental fence or protective barriers?
So, this, the way it's read is that it affixes formal fence in addition to protective barriers.
Okay, so, fix was added from the last copy that we had.
Yeah, yeah, that was a recommendation.
We talked about having it removable for litter or whatever it appears to be, so now it has to be fixed.
So, that's where the difference in the distinction is, is that the first part of this ordinance is for the current type of outdoor seating area, some places, a restaurant is always going to have this as part of the patio setup, or as long as we define. If you, when we get later into this, it does out specifically temporary, and in that portion, there's more relay in terms of being able to wave those separate requirements, especially when it's going to be a parking area that we don't want to be an affixed feature. That's also something where I could put in there language where if, if the planning permission, or something to that level, where there's a requirement that's made that there will be no good purpose or file, say, offense, or something like that, that there could be a waiver granted, if that's something that you guys desire to have that power authority, it just, they just have to be strict situations.
And then a four-foot tall fence, is that height what you ran across a lot in your searching? Because I don't think I, I've looked into an outdoor cafe that was a four-foot fence. Usually it was three feet, I don't know.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty typical in any areas that I was looking at, was a four-foot tall fence. I agree, I thought that was kind of an interesting height because...
I assume you've been like for a while, yeah, like you've walked around.
I mean, that was on my basis.
You're all three feet.
It's not typically like...
No, my back fence is four feet.
Yeah, yeah. So, like, that's something where that is not necessarily a requirement for alcohol service, it could be decreased to three feet if that is something that is wished, but the fence was an consistent requirement, the height was something that was, yeah, more up.
I mean, I've seen like high defence, they're like six feet tall, two foot, but most of them are just the shorter three foot of them.
Are we all in agreement on the three feet? No, let's change. I'm in a meeting agreement.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, I need to know any more details.
If we're all in agreement, we'll just...
Okay.
Or I can also do something where it's a no greater than four feet, or something like that, or we just...
If we want a minimum at least, or as you...
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, let's call it a minimum, a three, and then, you know, if they want to put up a ten foot line, they can.
Well, then number six for the signs.
Yeah.
Is there a possible way that you reference our sign ordinance? Or can you not reference other ordinances?
The sign ordinance doesn't really outline, this is part of like the location requirements. The sign ordinance would mostly would be the same stuff, like how we got front yard, probably can be fixed, so signs for footage, that type of stuff. Then I could do something where it does reference it, and we just have to align to that portion of the sign ordinance.
Yeah, let's... Okay.
Um, then if you succeed, now we start into parking as well as like occupancy and size. Specifically, it right now says that outdoor dining is just considered incidental accessory to the main use, and it shall not be included in the parking calculation unless it meets certain criteria, where if the total number of seats in that dining area exceeds thirty percent of what's allowed inside the building, then it needs to be included in the parking total, because now if that's pretty significant. If it stays under thirty percent, then it's just considered that that accessory use doesn't require additional parking. That's the gist of the first part of that regulation. The last part, in the case of a carryout or drive-through restaurant establishments, which typically in the occupancy load is going to be different to how it's calculated and how it's used, we put in blankets, the outdoor seating area should allow seat twelve seats for the outdoor dining area. And that was something that was seen in Madison Heights, as well as Stone Heights and other communities where you have like, for example, I remember it was Custard, or something like that, or Custard Spa, or something where you have an ice cream place, it doesn't necessarily like indoor seating, but they have outdoor seating, and you can't really go off of the occupancy load, because it doesn't really happen that way. So, twelve seats was, was typical, typically seen, once again, that's something I can come up to your discretion, but I just put that as what we're going to start with.
Okay, so, given our, what we've got going on, will this be easily applied when they're also consuming properties thoughts with their dining areas? Does that make sense? Because they're going to lose. Do we, do we want to...
Again, this is part of permanent one?
Oh, that's right, okay, skip me, okay. Yeah, thanks.
We'll get to the, the parking situation. Lightning, I referenced the light ordinance, the lighting ordinance, that's already with them there, and just reinforces the fact that we don't want to see any flare going on to break away the roads or anything like that. Hours of operation, we're limited from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., or whatever the operating hours are for that business, whichever one's more restricted.
So, say, maybe you're putting an outdoor dining that wants to breakfast, they can't, then even if they open at eight, they can't until ten, outdoor patio.
I mean, the situation of this?
They have a, up to the 10:00 p.m. as well. Why, I mean, why is it 10:00 p.m.? Is that something that was agreed upon, that I don't remember?
First, that's here of, that's, we want to see community general when it comes to outdoor socially gathering areas, areas typically cut off from either 10:00 or 11:00 p.m.
Which I can understand, especially if there's alcohol.
Yeah.
And neighboring offices.
I think it's a little different in Rochester, where the main street barriers, for example, some places frequented, they have an outdoor patio that's in operation until 2:00 a.m. or so, they're kind of leaning that, but most other communities have it similar to whatever their noise ordinance is, and that's either 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m. for, for strenuous noise. So, yeah, I'm, I'm open to feedback on that one, too.
Do you think the opening noises are strictly in sports and noises are a little restrictive, in my opinion, and I wouldn't mind seeing it till 11:00, 12:00? There's no place right now that you have that's open that late, so it wouldn't go in there, but I can see that building at 26 and Fairfax, if it does get into restaurant eating there, like they plan Friday, Saturday nights, they could be open until 10:00, 11:00, because they have liquor, since there is, so...
I guess I'd be open to 10:00 or 11:00, I don't think I'd want to go further than that, especially if there's alcohol, I just don't think so.
You don't look popular.
Okay, I'm going to be like a real, like, particular with it, say, 11:00 p.m. in areas where like residential, but isn't within someone's feet or something, I kind of feel like, yeah, over here, it's not a problem, but maybe at Curtis Cantina, when you've got like all that, the homes in the backyard, it might be a little bit problematic. I'm not saying that, you know, don't end up, but maybe, maybe a little bit more specific with what's around. Like, over here, there's houses, like, they go downtown, there's homes, you know, they're all pulled up on Foxham, and I appreciate that. Yeah, I see. And I don't know what good distance is, to be honest.
I think typical for like most ordinances, you usually talk about 300 feet, just there, similar to public hearings are handled, there's a generally recognized area of that, like, places that are directly adjacent to parcel, well, it's seventy-three, that's what we use. I can look more into that, but...
Is it from the boundary of the parcel, or is it from where?
So, for public hearings, it's the boundary of the parcel.
So, that's what, thirty feet from Main Street, that's...
So, by the angle of the other situations, that's like the governing body is liable for legal control, assuming from a door-to-door type of arrangement, it just depends on how long to find that, I mean, maybe the setup point of the parcel, and you could put that in there. Yeah, yeah, so, any more specific today, not the other thing?
I see the boundary, just because, I mean, the noise impact, I mean, you know, it doesn't happen, it's departmentally happy.
Yeah, and part of that is just so like, there is, there's a noisy pipe, or there's something enforceable from the police, if that is probable, then you can actually use the ordinance, just like that. Okay, I could look more into that, and I can add that language, and it would be that quite a stretch, period. Now against this, Laura F. This is for temporary outdoor dining. The language here is pretty much the same as last time, it's just that we're trying to encourage this type of use, seeing that it is valuable for our downtown and general business areas, if we are committed within these districts, and that it will be administratively reviewed, because they are a temporary permanent, not necessarily a permanent feature, so they don't have necessarily to apply the permission for that. But it'll still go with the same with the use to the dining area and fire safety area and else. Number one, that's still the same language in terms of the fact that these permits, mode of operate, cannot align to what will be required from the applicant for that, and it also just cites in general applicable fees as termed by the village, so that is something that can be set by village council, and can be met in that age. So, so that way it doesn't become something that in fifteen years is still satisfied or something, so that do take into account. Here's your ability to revoke a permit if there are any violations, or if the operation has been deemed unsafe or some nuisance, or violated, any other laws, or have been cited for any other violation, so we can use that permit. They also have the ability to appeal that to village council, so they have the ability to, to fight for that decision. Number four outlines the season that the temporary use can be done, this is, this didn't change, we still have April 15 through October 15. And then it just has, the language just says that all seating, screening, unseated, any protective barriers, outdoor dining materials, everything, must be removed and stored off-site outside of permitted outdoor dining season past defined. So, that just makes it so they include that after this stuff. Number five, this is where you have to so be designed, says the party design landscaping for temporary dining areas shall adhere to the design criteria as provided by the smart bits, and may be waived by the building department's director slash official, or they're judging in specific case consideration, or no good purpose would come from following such criteria. So, they need to follow the design criteria that was outlined before, but in a situation where you can't have a fixed harness in the parking lot, the building official would logically not be able to say, we don't need to do that. So, that's what that basically just says. And then after that, it says that, it just outlines what will need to be submitted, that we need to put in a sketch, a sketch plan, of where it's going to be located, and everything else, demonstrating the safety and designing features, which are basically, this text is a typo, design features. And then has, once again, the fire and safety, and that right there. Number six, this gets now into the parking situation. The outdoor dining area shall be configured to provide safe separation from neighboring parking spaces and drive aisles. Protective barriers and equal planters or decorative housing may be used, this is defined dining space into like proper screening for the area. And then it says further active areas, four corridor swing areas shall be maintained for adjacent parking spaces, minimum of three feet. And that's a pretty, pretty typical swing buffer for parking design. And this is for the temporary outdoor dining areas located in the parking lot, and may not reduce the number of available parking spaces below the minimum required for the site. If the site consists of less than ten total parking spaces, only one parking space may be displaced for this purpose. So, that's, that's a good part of the process, so when we submit their permit, they need to show how many spaces are required of the site, and that whatever they're doing will not bring them below what their requirement is. Because in, in most situations, people have more parking spaces than what they're required for, to have. And then this allows some ability to still have a, an outdoor dining area, in these situations, where it's small right now. And then letter G is just prepackaged whole harmless language that I pulled from the state question, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. I know there's a lot there. Some of it's the same, some of it's just slight modifications, and then I appreciate your feedback on things that I've, so, I don't know. Any other questions? I'm going to take that.
Anybody? So, take back table. Table, you told.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make some changes, amendments, I'll bring it back, so you'll figure that next week.
So, I'll make a motion, is the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, John, good job. Okay, moving on to new business, Morgan's Auto. You guys want to come up or?
No.
No, he was going to make comments.
I have one question, this is filed, so I can do this preliminary?
It's preliminary, I thought I said preliminary. I might not have, sorry, my bad. Okay, so, we'll start with, just for, so I cannot make it tonight, so we'll read his review into outdoor. John, do you want to start with yours?
Yeah. I believe you should all have a copy of, of the review and comments, should have sent out. We reviewed the proposed site plan for Morgan's Auto, the parcel is ours, mine industrial was recently designated as... was recently designated as a non-conforming Class A site. And they're calling out this. The non-conforming Class A was, was granted by the village council. Class A designation recognizes that the primary structure on the site is not conforming, specifically because there are setback encroachments, whatever was constructed, Grashet looked the way it did, and over time, it just, the setbacks or anything else aren't necessarily what's reported anymore, so it's not conforming. But what the Class A designation does do is it recognizes that this building exists, that it does not necessarily, is not a negative to the community, and then it also allows the site to be altered. It gives them a process to allow them to alter the business, the business of the site, whereas a traditional non-conforming site that does not have that designation will not be able to do that at all. However, when, when there is an enlargement or any proposal, it does require that it goes through site plan approval, and that would then also need to be reviewed by a planning commission, as well as some of the work of appeals, just because of the nature of the class A designation, and then it would also need a public hearing at some point as well, as it's like outlined in the ordinance. The site plan is required to show existing conditions of the site, and then you design to detail the proposed expansion, and because it is a site plan, it does require that there is some effort put into decreasing non-conforming features that are alterable, to bring it more into performance for public health, safety, and lawfare. As it does like trigger this, I'm sure Sir Matt probably has it, the engineering requirements that's something out because there has been an alteration of the site. Now, going into the district and dimensions, the site is ours, mine industrial. As presented, the proposed expansion does not encroach into the required side yard or the rear of setbacks, and the expansion does not necess, does not go further to those areas, so not expand the non-conforming characteristics of the actual structure itself. And nothing's changing on the front, so that's, that's still consistent there. For outdoor storage, the proposed expansion and alterations projected into the rear of the site will alter the existing outdoor storage yard, its operation and on-site circulation, which is also why it's been, it's requiring to be fire savvy, fire lane, fire circulation simulation for that as well, which I believe can, our, our fire chief has gone on and Sir Matt may have cited as well. And given that it is a older site, the way that the outdoor storage area was operated was in a non-conforming manner compared to what is required now, with the site plan it does require that there's enough made to adhere to the setback requirements for how close things can be attached to the property boundaries, as well as if there is screening provided, so that it is screened from residential properties, which the school behind it is technically residential, so it does require landscape screening for those areas. And the requirements for anything else with regard to hazardous materials is outlined in second, second section, section five oh five, one five, two, L H D, half and G. Parking, the applicant will have four service days in operation of the site, and they will be required to provide a total of twenty-five parking spaces with one leading barrier free. And then I give the, the way that that's calculated, according to the ordinance, the applicant says that there's two hundred sixty-nine parking spaces up provided. They're not necessarily outlined on the site, they're just, I think it's like a general kind of area in the back, so it's just like if that's going to be on the site plan, it needs to kind of be like more clearly outlined on there, as to where those are, and what those dry aisles are and everything else, and where those parking spaces will be. In addition, the parking design currently is not compliant because the, specifically the front parking is within the right of way of, of Grashet, and that's not permitted, so that needs to be addressed. And then further, and that's actually like where the, the barrier free spaces are proposed to be located, they're already located, and there is parking within ten feet of the interior side line, which the ordinance does not allow. For the dumpster location, just please identify where this can be located, I forgot, I was actually just thinking of that, but I know it was discussed to be in the storage yard back there, if it's going to be in the storage yard and behind the screen area, you don't need to, to enclose it or anything like that, it's just, it's already going to be closed in the screen area. So just detail where that location's going to be, and then maybe some engineering requirements in terms of it sitting out of concrete pad or, or something like that, if there's already existing concrete pad, just identify that. Lighting, if you're going to provide any lighting, please provide where this can be located, if it's beyond the structure itself, or if it's going to be holes or anything like that. And that there isn't, you're not having flood lighting that's going to be facing any residential district, so it can't necessarily be in the rear of the site, points at the school and like that. So that's, that's what I've found to review this initial preliminary site plan. There's, there's a couple things here that need to be addressed and revised. So we are, our recommendation with that said, and responding to recommendations that the village planning and engineering may have, is that we use, you table this with time being, and discuss next steps.
Okay, so any questions for John at this time?
So, the fire side report.
That went out yesterday. Did you get it?
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah. And the fire side, we had no issues? If I recall, I...
Yeah, they're not going to have to report.
Okay.
There's not issues about that.
And the other issue that I, I thought we had agreed that the screening proposals, that the, that we could use, that he could use fabric on the fencing, it didn't necessarily have to be a vermin or...
So, I don't recall the fabric, the ordinance actually doesn't allow like a slat or hurricane fencing type, but woven, screening. There is, if you're going to waive certain, or decrease the requirements, if there isn't necessarily a good purpose for screening, so I'll say a vermin isn't, let's say appropriate for this situation, but you can have, the alternative could be a file fence with shrubs or something like that, that wouldn't necessarily be as intensive as approaching into the storage yard or may impact fire circulation, so alternatives like that, that within the ordinance are under your provisions to be able to grant, and then you can lower some of those, some of those standards of compliance, for example, which I believe that is actually one of the requirements is, for this, but yeah, you can change everything, you know, or, or some other alternative for that.
Please, as I listened to you, John, and you were reading through this, it seems like the, and it could be misinterpreted, but it seems like the, the front parking, appears to be the biggest issue because of the location right away?
That's, that's one, yeah, one of the issues, there's four spaces specifically that are directly in, in the Grashet right of way, right there, and then the, I believe Sir Matt already can, or looked at the surfaces for the storage area, and the guys were able to show that there was enough gravel or something like that, showed, so like that was nothing, that was kind of outstanding, but it hasn't been noted. So it's, it's mainly the parking that's there, and then the screening is specifically as it faces the school site, so clear of the site, so with that, with the outdoor storage area, that's, yep.
So the, the fourth spaces...
Kind of made a lot of it, yeah.
So the fourth spaces, am I to assume they're, they're closer to Grashet than that to building itself?
Yeah, yeah, they are, they are probably, let me guess, I don't know, it's kind of hard to tell from the plan, I guess a twenty feet closer to Grashet or the building, possibly. I see like the right of way log, and it goes right through like half of the park, like half of the depth of the park, the four parking spaces.
Okay, so those need to be dislocated or recreated elsewhere?
Yeah, probably, yeah, they're not permitted in front yard for like industrials, so they have been moved to more interior, so away from Grashet.
Anybody else with John questions? Okay, I will pause for a minute, everybody, have, have you guys independently read Sir Matt's review? Do you think I need to read it? Let me see what's in that section.
Hi, John.
Hey, it's Matt, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, can everybody hear okay? Okay, so I haven't read your review, would you like it read, or would you like to just everyone here, are you guys solid listening to Matt's review, like reading through it and everything?
It's very generic, so I mean, I don't think you have any recommendations outside of just listing up the whole stuff.
I didn't get it, I'm sorry.
Um, he said it's very generic, wasn't sure, I don't want to...
I don't know if there's any recommendations, I can't...
He's wondering what you're asking for from him, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's Mark, and Mark is asking.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Usually, in our letters, we, we touch on the highlights and the general comments, because this is not a construction, not a constructability interview, it's, it's a site plan. And the task here is just to go, over the zoning requirements, setting requirements, lighting, landscaping, et cetera, not the constructability. That's why our letter is somewhat generic, and once it passes the, the planning commission, then we get into all the civil engineering, the building department requirements, which has the detailed construction documents. So, in my letter, you know, just to touch on the highlights, everything is, is general, except two items, which is the paving and the grading and drainage. So pavement, part of the, the middle darkness, it requires twenty-eight feet of a, of a pavement, of a two-way drive paved roadway with a six-inch curbs around the entire perimeter. It's not clear from the plan, if that's satisfied, also it should be at least an eight-inch thick concrete or an cobalt asphalt. Also, it needs to satisfy a fire truck simulation, a forty-two radius fire truck simulation on the plan for access. And we, we did receive fires out of your view notes in the plan approval. It does show a couple comments, they're, they're noting the nearest hydrants by four with a four hundred feet of all portion of the facility. Not sure if that's satisfied or not. The last one I'm leaving is the five-foot sidewalk requirements along the front edge. It looks like a portion of the property is supplied with a five-foot sidewalk, but not the southern part, which they show some parking spots. That's as far as paving, drainage, and grading. Once, once the site, since the site plan is submitted, triggers the current, all the current requirements of the village, and that is, one of them is the detention requirements, which is state law, that all, all drainage on site needs to be contained within a pond, an on-site pond, and then released to an approved discharge point. That needs to be addressed during the engineering stage, but the applicant should be aware of that. We talked about that with the chair, and they are aware of it, so. Again, these are the highlights, if the planning commission approves the site plans today, tonight, they can address these comments later on at the engineering stage, so always, we recommend the planning commission approval contingent upon satisfying engineering, building, and fire.
Okay, Mark has a question for you.
Um, there was a conversation between him and Dan Akavati, that we weren't bringing in dirt or removing dirt, so drainage was no longer an issue.
He understood between, you were speaking with Mr. Akavati, that you guys, if they weren't bringing or moving in dirt, that it was not a factor, can you expand on that? Is that accurate, Mark?
Correct.
So, yeah, Mr. Akavati from the, the Com County Drain Office, they control all, all the public discharge, attention points. Now, they are encouraged to reach out to them and get something ready, I didn't get a phone call from them, but I don't think, there was a plan submitted officially, we didn't receive an official letter. I, I did receive a phone call, again, Mr. Akavati said this is, they got treated as just a building expansion, they will probably not go and torch a detention fine, but, and we, we're okay with that, as long as we get that letter, but, again, this is a site plan approval, not a construction plan approval. So we can, they can take care of that later, that's, that's my point.
Okay, he's good with that.
Okay.
Okay, did you have any more questions while Sir Matt's on the line?
No, no, he's not there.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Sir Matt? Do you want to hang up a minute, Sir Matt?
Yeah, I can hang up, just if there's any further questions, discussions.
Did you want to speak on anything at all?
The only thing else I was asking was, the scrimmage, so the east side of the lot or the north side of the lot, were you more concerned about? So the storage on the east side, but it's a solid metal fence, eight foot tall, so that's one I'm not quite certain about.
The requirement for the ordinance would be pretty much the, ordinance defines the entire storage, so anything that is part of the storage yard, that will have a fence or people like that, they're screened, will need to have a screening, so like trees, fence, or anything else there. And then specifically anywhere that's going to be a blight, the residential landslide, anything that's like new cave in high school, basically, a lot of the property, that would be the most important, if you're going to prioritize it, and obviously the other side is important too, well, you've got to be the priority focus areas would be those areas that are blighted, the high school, the overhead.
Yeah, you're never sure about property, it's school. And part of that is how various, and I think the other seventy-five percent of the fences, that's what we need to match at that point, that's why we'd be all consistent all the way around.
Yeah, looking at the area, it looks like it's pretty much surrounded by trees.
Yeah, the school already has its own barrier around us, that's all, that's all their, it's around that place now, so that's the way that it's always been since the school's been. So that's the way that it's always been since the school's been. That was my comment earlier, that the screening, I mean, I drive past, but I, I purposely look to the movie. And I'm not seeing much.
Then they're like, you're a cover.
Because of the existing screening that's in place, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's several things. One, really, if, if you guys assign two tables aside, um, I recommend taking photos, having, having a case made that there is sufficient screening and showing that in your plan, and showing that with a visual evidence. Um, and showing what that looks like. Second, part of it as well is if that screening isn't part of the property, it's not necessarily your issue. It's, it's part of the school's property, and if, let's say those trees died or something like that, or something like that happens, then you still have the issue of, of now that it goes visible and the school will have to plant those things again, so they cannot see it. When technically the ordinance requires that the person who has the outdoor storage area has to provide that screening. Because it's amazing special areas, that's part of what's required in the ordinance. And third, let's get, because it's, it's part of the ordinance requirement, that when there is an alteration, it does trigger the site plan, that's part of what some of the requirements are in the site plan. Now, like I said, there is the ability to be granted a waiver to decrease the level of how tense the screening has to be, with consideration for all the context of anything else. But that's something where it's, you potentially may even take the burn requirements, like you, or maybe decrease some of the tree requirements, but you're still going to say plant some trees or make sure that there is, those features still sort of in there. In that, the parking in general is, that early storage is separated a little bit further away from the boundaries where that twenty foot buffer is set. Because that's one of the main parts of the outdoor storage, you can't have stuff stored up to the property and then pass it back. And that's what the, uh, that special landing just requires for outdoor storage.
Can I ask that question on the screening? Can we attach a clause? Because, you know, the school has presented a letter that they're not willing to share that, right? So can we attach a clause that in the event this, the existing screening is removed, that they have X amount of time to, to make, to, to do it within their own boundaries?
I think there's always creative ways to do.
Is a clause practical with something like that?
I mean, you see it with parking, and Sir Mad corrected it from wrong in this, but.
Sir Mad has a question for you.
You'll see it with like banked parking. You'll see with banked parking where somebody doesn't, has made the case that they don't need five hundred parking spaces, that they only want to do two hundred parking spaces, and if the need should arise, they will bank the three hundred additional parking spaces that need to be installed, if the village requires that, that they would have to install it. So that is something that you'll see with parking, if defined correct. So I, I believe that could be something that could be applicable in this. The issue, where I would caution that is, like anything like that, if that will come down to enforcement. Because then it's up to the village to catch that when it happens, to have the memory to, to know that there was this agreement, and then like in thirty years or whatever, say if something like that, the trees go. Then somebody, oh yeah, I remember we had this agreement and I didn't enforce it. And who knows if you guys are still, like, the owners or what school would have, who knows? That would still be the agreement that's binding for the property, and if you have to enforce it at that point, it's really, it's a issue, sorry. So that's, that's the potential issue with that. But it is a solution, it is something that I have seen, that's in the last day in Butter Park, so.
I would think the, well.
So, I'm sorry, John, I did not.
Sorry, I summarize all of that.
Uh, he just basically talked about banked parking agreements and like putting stuff sort of in the background until necessary. Is that something, I, I think the kind of answer, the statement answered itself? Or was there a question for Sir Mad, or?
This was just like, like, has he seen banked parking, has he seen it applied to other?
Have you seen like banked parking applied to other similar site plans?
Yes, uh, usually banked parking reserves, uh, just like you said, um, for a later date, um, in, in case it's needed. So as long as the plan shows that and whatever the trigger is for, to activate the, the, the banked parking area, is, is warranted, then, then they have to provide it at that time. The only thing I'm, I wasn't sure if somebody touched base on, there are four spots of parking proposed along inside the Grasham right away, which is not.
Right, John did expand on that.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's not permitted.
The, the, uh, the issue with the screening, I think you guys have said that you're willing to, um, fill in the blank spots.
I'm gonna finish it regardless.
Yeah, so, so they get the trees on the school side, who happened to die, or then the property is still screened.
Yeah, I, I would say regardless, like with, with the site plan, it should include some detail about what the screening is that you currently have. So like, some type of, um, sketch or drawing that the engineer or architect or whoever you're working with can put together that shows we have a, let's say five foot fence, it has slats, it has vinyl, it has something that obscures it, whatever it is. If you have any vegetation, I think plants and trees currently exist, like identifying that it's there or what is there currently. And then, like I said, provide photos and show that this is sufficient. And I think the other thing too is the perspective from the high school. It's like, how visible is it still from the high school, where it's existing? I don't, I don't know the answers to that, but it's like, if you stare at a property, can you see what you have in your storage yard? Based on currently what you have. And that, if, if the answer is yes or no, or whatever it is, if you have photos, that might help show exactly what's part of it.
How do you do it?
So, I see just like, like have something like a, like a power plant or like print out some pictures and stuff, just provide us a, to prove so we can consider those things and then hear what your arguments is against it, and consider, and be able to make a decision off of that.
So, uh, last, last question would be, how do I remove the front half of the parking lot? Like, I don't, like, I can't, I, do I put a barrier that people just, that you can't park in a parking lot anyway? I don't understand that question.
I feel like.
Because that's a, that's a good portion of it, I mean, outside of moving.
I feel like that's really, of, of, of everything we got going on, I feel like that's probably like of most, of significant, I won't say of most, but of significant importance.
Yeah.
Just because of, it, it's just not a lot, like it's.
Right.
Right, I mean, I, I don't know what the solution is without, I have to see it, but.
I feel like if you talk to Sir Mad who's on there, I believe that the solution would have to be a tear out.
A what?
Like ripping it out, like.
What's the solution for the four parking spots out front, Sir Mad?
That's, uh, they need to be removed.
So it's here?
Parking within public right of way.
I don't understand that, but what's the solution?
As you guys know, we have other sites that, that are in violation of the same thing.
I can remove parking lots, that's, do you plan a tweeder or what?
What do you, what would you, the grass hair or, or sidewalk, well, sidewalk, well, no, you would put a sidewalk.
Yeah, does the pavement have to be removed or, or could it just be stripped out or what is it?
Does, does the pavement have to be removed, does it have to be stripped out? What is your recommendation of a solution, Sir Mad?
Oh, uh, aside from a sidewalk, uh, no other pavement is allowed.
Okay.
Unless it's part of, because it's in public right of way and, and it's technically owned by that. So unless that wants to own a piece of concrete that do it nothing, which I assume that they, they don't. Only, only public sidewalk is allowed, and doesn't pay back with it, with a road right away. Oh, aside from the road itself is a question.
Okay, Joe?
What is the, what are the problems? Because there is, there is a swivel that's along the bigger creek, that brings the all kinds of fence, okay? Where is it, are you looking at fences you were with the pressure, or are you looking at where?
I'll have John look at it, I'm loyal to that, I'll make sure to. It's basically if you follow the sidewalk that's on the other side of your parking lot, the part farthest away from the road down. So you're in the sidewalk, and the sides would follow that down, the purple is your problem. Everything else is to the grassy area. No, we're talking about these spaces right here. Basically, well, I have a sidewalk.
So it's required before that public sidewalk be put in, so it would come right through the, boom, right through the creek? And as far as the sidewalk won't be solved, it's usually a can't go to the song, it would occur, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I just gotta get the question to, if there is a, the jelly drain that's going through there, are they requiring to bridge over that?
Are they, Sir Mad, are they required to bridge over the drain?
Um.
A bridge over it?
They doubt it, this, this is an existing facility.
Okay.
It's, it's, and this, this site is very complicated, it has a flood plain for the, um, this, this is the shit drain. Um, so it has a flood elevation and it floods on and, yeah, I don't, I don't think, um, they will require that since they're not building, um, uh, uh, as a new development. I mean, technically, yes, um, they have to go all the way to the corner, but we're talking about an addition.
That's them not's property, you haven't agreed with them.
Yeah, their boundary line just goes right to the creek. The boundary doesn't go past that. Yeah, their boundaries, their, Sir Mad, did you hear that, their boundaries just go to the start of the creek?
Yeah, the boundary you go, kind of goes along, along the, um, the edge of the flood plain.
Yep.
Especially the, the fence, so it's right on, on the edge.
So it goes to what extent will they provide the sidewalk?
To what extent will they have to re-provide the sidewalk to the other parking lot?
I would say, uh, where those four slots are, and that's not great there.
I don't get it, because it goes up to the creek, that's not, that's not safe. It goes nowhere. It's not safe, because I'm gonna clear that road, okay, we don't walk into the river. And that's just my thought.
What?
Their, their property goes up to the creek, but would the, the other side of the creek allow for the sidewalk to go?
It's not their property.
It's not their property. No, but to the edge of their property line?
Their property line ends with the creek. They're not gonna then pink up over here and start going, that's not their property.
Well, no, but couldn't the sidewalk continue across to here and connect to the schools on this side of the creek?
You can't connect.
Our property is on the north side of the creek, and that is such.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think he's suggesting put a sidewalk there.
Basically along the flood plain. Well, north of the creek, between the creek and the fence line. So don't cross it, don't make a bridge, just put a sidewalk that leads to the school. And the school can finish their sidewalk, so it goes to.
Yeah, that's all.
Which all goes along with me, it should be a path based on what we saw.
Between the creek and, and the fence.
Yes. See, isn't that what was proposed in the, um, what we saw for the trail coming from Chesterfield through to Richmond in ninety-two?
I don't recall, um, but that, that, not enough real estate in there to put a sidewalk in. And that, 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 uh, creek bank would be really close to the sidewalk, that, I would not recommend that for safety reasons. If, if the village wants a sidewalk along the road, they have to switch closer to Main Street or North Avenue Road at that, that location, and go closer to the roadway on the other side of the creek.
Which is not the property, right? So, yeah, so it would just be required on the, the front part that we probably refer to, where the parking spots are. All right. Okay, so anybody else have any questions for Sir Mad?
Would it finish the sidewalk if it goes to the school or twelve?
It doesn't finish it, I think it just spans on, right? Because it doesn't.
Well, it doesn't connect current.
There is no sidewalk going to the school property right now.
Who's asked for it? It's a trail, it's wide.
Could it stop at the, uh?
I thought it stopped at the parking lot. I think it stops at the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not for their drawings, I'm not looking at an area, I'm looking at their drawings.
I think it stops right at the parking lot, and then it goes to the rest.
Let's see here. I'm looking, it says asphalt.
Yeah, I don't think it's there, I think that's just the deal, right? It's crazy looking, is there something there? Does the school have asphalt there?
It looks, yeah.
There's a driveway, but there is no sidewalk.
Hmm, it looks like in the area.
Where are you guys looking at?
Just, I don't get it.
The very south end of the school property on Grasham.
Do you know there may be a sidewalk over there on the high school?
It's there, the way, the way it's on there, yeah. On me?
Me?
Or on Grasham?
On Grasham, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like that.
It's a really low one, kind of. So.
Yeah, Grasham on the north, north, but there are two driveways to the mortgage. The north of the driveway is, the sidewalk is connected to the north of the driveway. And I believe there is a segment, a small segment, in between the driveways, it's already built, that leads to the main building, the mortgage portal. So between the two driveways, there is a sidewalk.
Right.
It's not to that where this, these four stalls are, uh, it's just a payment, there's no sidewalk, there's no, nothing.
Yeah. So, okay. I know, I wonder if there's any way they can just cut that.
Yeah, if you leave it as favor, people will park on it regardless of what kind of size you put it in.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else for Sir Mad? You guys good with Sir Mad?
I can stay, John, until the item is.
Okay.
Finished.
Okay, uh, anything else for John? Any?
What's our next step?
For what are you asking?
What's our next step?
Uh, we can table so that they can address some of the concerns further. Present the pictures, so, present the remedies as far as the, you know, there's simple things there. There's a lot of, like, the dumpster, the, the side, what they're gonna do with those four parking spots, um.
Can we, can we preliminary?
Um, I mean, there's, I think there's a lot more conversation can, I mean, I think there's probably a lot more there to.
When you think about the thing that you're talking about, you're talking about four parking spaces, you're talking about screening. You're talking about things that they should be able to accomplish on preliminary, um, approval if, if we so desire.
Why wouldn't they accomplish from the last month, two months?
I'm sorry.
Why aren't these things accomplished in the talks? Why is it coming to us for final?
Have we had this conversation?
Not really, no. They've been, it was not final, it was preliminary, yeah.
Oh.
It was drawn, I think. Yeah, most of the, most of the work that's been taking place is been taken, like, they've been having their meetings with Sir Med and as with John.
Not that they're in front of us, why can't we do a preliminary approval? Which gives them exactly what they need to come back with a final as far as the elimination of these four parking spaces, the completion of the screen, the extension of the sidewalk, which are small items, but they, they, you know, because we keep kicking this down the road, I mean, it's
Well, to be fair, we haven't.
Right, but I'm saying.
We have not kicked this down the road.
I understand.
It's been kicked out. It's been kicked down the road, yes, I, I hear you.
You know, let, you know, let's, we'll get off the pot. Let's move it along. I mean, now, by, by, by at least giving them preliminary, now it's in their court. If they do nothing with it, it's still within.
I'm kind of wondering with Chris, these aren't huge items that you've seen on other preliminary site plans that need to be addressed and more comfortable moving forward, I mean, four parking spots and screening.
Let's, let's do our job and let's move it along.
Is your recommendation changing, John? Our recommendation is to take?
I, I think, I mean, conditional approval is always something the figure guys is obligated to do. That's something out of that, just being trusted to administer your process, to make sure the conditions are met, um...
They would still have to come back, wouldn't they?
No, because the final site plan is not even administrative process.
And, and that's part of the issue. That the final site plan is done administratively. So, so we never see it again. And, you know, that's one of the things that I was at a problem with.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with whatever direction guys choose to go. My only word caution would just be, specifically within the landscaping situation in terms of if you guys are going to grant labor, that, that needs to kind of be discussed as to what that treatment is. It's kind of hard to grant it without understanding or seeing what they're presenting, using the full context.
Can we grant preliminary approval and have them come back and for us for final? As part of the motion?
Um, I don't believe it's part of the process. I have to look at the rules and procedures, but.
Well, as you know, certainly, with you and Sir Med?
Yeah, pretty much just myself, Sir Med, and, and building building officials now.
You guys know what we're talking about here.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say this because this is where I draw my concern on it. Is there are some things here that are going to have some flexibility? We hand it off administratively, as far as I know, they don't have flexibility. So, that screening, that screening is getting done. We can kind of sit here and look at pictures next month and say, okay, you know what, that's enough. John and Sir Med can't look at pictures. They are basically going to come back and say, no, they didn't do it. They didn't do it by the standard that you have in these ordinances that it can be done. We can say, okay, we looked at these pictures, let's give them this and that. They cannot say that.
And that's, that's kind of my concern, I don't necessarily have a point, you can have a little bit. So, it'd be something where I'd try to get a few guys ahead of that. And we'd be able to like make a decision and specifically say that this is what people require. Which is different from what the ordinance will require. It's just, it's the unfortunate fact that like, it just, I, I think it would then have to go to this September meeting just to do that one part of the process. And that's just to be able to address that screening situation. Otherwise, yeah, I don't necessarily have the tools that...
So, so what I would have been said is saying, bring them back with their corrected site plan, with their pictures. And then, and then we can...
Yeah.
I, I think that the thing too is just like, I think if you do the conditional or it comes to September, I don't think it necessarily like speeds up the process because things still have to go about their billing. And then, because we can't essentially run them and build them current until, you know, something's addressed anyways, um...
I don't think it holds them up at all. I, I think, I think we table it, at the same time, they just treat it like it's an unconditional improvement or an unconditional proof, just treat it that way. Make the changes and the revisions that need to be made. It's gonna take a little while to do that anyways. So, I don't think it really puts them behind a ton of time and it does give them the offer, or us, the opportunity to give them some leeway that they wouldn't have if we approved it today. That's how I see it, correct me if I'm wrong, but... Sir Med, thoughts?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, I could, I agree with moving it along as far as in sharing, I mean, I can't speak for other departments or for engineering, but I don't see anything critical to hold them.
Right.
They can address all these items and they, they maybe get weight if the green office is not, um, and they come back with enough information that they're not increasing burnout or whatever. Certain things can be a no issue.
If they're required to put the burn in, so they are, or in, to put a burn in, so then they would need the retention pond.
Right? I didn't catch that question, I'm sorry.
They would need the retention pond if they have to create the burn? Because of the Iraq?
What burn?
Or the, uh, the screening.
No, they start to, they're kind of next.
Good? So... What is, any other questions, thoughts?
How tall is the fence that you have?
So, it's eight foot tall. Would you guys be opposed to be like a metal roofing? Just putting metal roofing sheets and it'll be solid fence all the way across? On my side and who cares what happens to their screening if the builders are coming?
I haven't been...
I mean, it's running metal on the east side, so the north side...
Is there any of the fence that needs to be cleaned?
It's, yeah, so it's slatted right now, probably eighty percent of it. If I just put metal sheeting all the way, you know, screwed like it would be a metal roof, then you'll never see, you know, the inside or outside. You can get it green for new payment if you like.
I'm not there, is there any quickie that I can pull back? I can't.
It would, it would look like a, I don't want to talk privacy, but it's really, I mean...
So, there is a materials requirement when it comes to expensive notices. I believe, I don't have to be honest with you, but I believe there's vital pressure treated wood asprey of some sort, or concrete asprey. Those are the typical fence requirements. Once again, if you have a, an alternative you want to propose, and recommend and correct me on this if you want something different, but bring an image or sample or, or something of what that might look like, just so the commission can see what that is.
I wouldn't invest in doing it right now. Okay, that's what I would say.
It was okay for several businesses having the time asking, Wallman's, for example, that's what it is. Looks pretty good.
Where?
Wallman's Land Speaking.
I'm just gonna...
Where is it?
Yeah.
Twenty-six mile, just west. Brown solid.
I think I think what, just for understanding is like I hear what you're saying, first of all, I'll say, you know, it looks, they have it over here, they have it over there.
It just looks nice, I'm not.
I've...
I get you.
But they, like, it's just because they have it doesn't mean we can allow it going forward. It probably happened at a point that either we were never aware of it or it just happened before it existed. So, every time we say, and, and I think this will probably explain a lot to you, but every time we say yes to something that our folks say no to, we're setting precedence that we can't stand behind it, if someone else down the road, maybe it doesn't look as good. Right, you know what I'm saying? So, give you your four, four, um, not that we can do it anyways, but just as a hypothetical, we give you your four parking spots. Now, we have to give everybody the same play. And while I understand that it's been there, you know, and been that way for a really long time, we, we just can't be, you know, so when come back, that's when most evaluations happen. So, when these other places come back that have these things that they shouldn't have, that's where they kind of get bit out. Just the precedence aspect of it.
No, it's...
That's, it's all...
That's, in fact, a lot of businesses down Grasham, in my opinion, because yes, if I have to remove out my parking lot, I'm going to throw a veto on the rest. There's no doubt about it.
I...
It just sucks for all the ones that have no parking. It's not fair.
I don't disagree with you.
I can, I have plenty of room, I can, I can move it, I can do what I'm gonna do, they don't.
Right. And that actually isn't even something that we can...
Right, it's the same.
We, I just use that as an example, but it's not even something we can even entertain here.
Yeah, I understand.
Unfortunately, so... Um, okay, so, I wouldn't invest in that type of fence, maybe just come back, give us an idea of what it looks like so we can see, um, and maybe a couple other options, you know, maybe playing Plan A, B, C, kind of thing, is what you can do that. And take pictures, I would specifically, pictures from the perspective, I would assume that our most people are most aware of, like, coming from the school, like a broad picture of what that looks like. And maybe what you could do just generally for those small spots that, you know, or... Yes, that's good. Um, anybody else? Did you have any more questions?
No, I think that's about sums it up. I mean, it's really only two things to address, it's not that...
Well, I think there's a few, I think you've got like to sort of redo this a little bit, you got to do the sidewalks, or the sidewalk, you've got the parking spots. Um, that sidewalk is gonna probably stick just because we've made it stick for everybody else, even though they don't go anywhere. Um... Your, your screening, the little things, like the dumpster location, just all those little things, I would just...
Put them on the cycle, yeah.
Yeah, just check those things off. Anything else of significance for you, John?
No, I think those, those are big ones, is just demonstrating what's is, is an existence for the screen and what they're proposing to, to fix it.
Yeah.
Um, is a big part of it. And just be prepared on that front for next week. And be specific about what you're requesting from us for an alternative.
Right. Sir Med, anything specifically you would like them to come back with for next month?
First, I find, no, same recommendation stands. Um, so to me, if they submit anything further, it's gonna be same comments.
Okay, you, but do you want to see correction on anything prior to?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Okay. So, um, anybody else? Okay, you guys good with the questions? You can always reach out if you have any. Yeah.
It's been fifteen months, I try.
I, I, okay.
Motion to table until September meeting. Like, trying to be... Okay.
Good job.
Number, I don't know what it is. I think it's four, isn't it?
We should know they're paid off.
I should, is it a third? I just looked it up. Yes, third.
Until September.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here. Okay, so tabled, you're good? I think that's pretty...
Yeah, I think it's good, I'm just trying to figure out like the process, you know? This is my first meeting on actual process of it.
Right.
It's like it's been fifteen months just to have this meeting. And yesterday we had three or four pretty much pointless conversations because this could have happened fifteen months ago when I was brought to a meeting with, with him, Sir Med, for pretty much no reason. He could have told me all this upfront. Um, could have done it. I saw it, we had, it could have been done. But, yeah, I'm just trying to get the, um... Is there a huge process after it goes through this?
You are, then? You're going to, so, everything that's here still needs to get done.
Of course.
Okay, and even what you just said, you're going to go back to working and checking those boxes off and then Sir Med and John are going to confirm that they've been checked. And that's it. And then you'll get your, I'm sorry.
Like, the ZVA would serve it?
Oh, because of that one. Yeah, the ZVA would have to, yeah. And so you, that would be the, well, that would be the end of the building, both the ZVA and your ZVA.
So, in terms of meetings, if we, this body would have to prove it, the zoning board of appeals would have to prove it the same way, both times. And then, after that, it's all administrative between myself and Sir Med, the village engineer, the confider, who else can sign off on whatever your final plans are. And then, after that, it's just the permits to, to build and actually do work.
So, we filed October as the earliest before we even gave a permit to build that. Roughly. So, that's meeting, and then October would be another month for the ZVA.
Depending, we might be able to get you into the ZVA at the end of September. Because it's the fourth week.
Will it post in a time?
Good. Okay. If we approve it that Tuesday, I can do it then for the Wednesday for the submitted to major for, for that. Good.
Okay. Okay. So, aim for a ZVA at the end of September and then we'll be working with?
Just hoping before winter, that's, that's like really simply what I'm trying to...
Stay warm?
The goal, you know?
Right.
You know, not to have your guys aspire to cheap, like, two weeks to get an AC fix. It's, uh, super important.
Right.
So, it just, it sucks.
Okay.
I wanna take it really down, that's the main thing, that's all we're, so we've done enough for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your feedbacks. All right. I think we're done with you, Sir Med.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Yeah, have a good vacay.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my. Okay, planners report.
Nothing to report.
Uh, public. Uh... And call from the table. Anyone?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm bringing up the trail because the last I heard was the trail would go along New Haven Road. It was originally slated to go in through the core park between school property and the core park and the board there refused to do that. So, the trail got pushed, continued on New Haven Road up to Main Street on that side of the street. And it was a while before I had this conversation, but it sounds like Lennox is gonna foot their bill for their portion of, um, the trail.
Are you talking about the Greenway Trail?
I predict it was called...
I think there's, there's nothing final, it's always gonna propose and it's been moved to three different spots now, so I mean, any conversations I've had have been breaked.
And honestly, to put that on organs, I just, you know, that's not on them, that's on us.
There's even nothing even final on anything. It's all just, like I said, there's already been three changes to where it's gonna go. Basically, it was gonna go up through Amherst along the drain, then it was gonna go along the railroad tracks.
Only the actual, like, the official plan or, or that was done by the county, who knows, some grant letting, some contract, come funding. But there, there are like two or three different alternative routes because there's a couple different issues about crossing over towards borders and from that road. There's like a couple of complaints that are proposed and obstacles there. But there, yeah, there was a dotted lines and kind of all the directions, so... And hopefully, at the point of developing that, typically, there should be either ADAC, state funds or federal highway funds and stuff that can help support building railroad rush trails on that data point and should cover that good portion of cost, but those those are construction projects.
They have a final, I don't think.
Yeah, and then, yeah, it depends on where all the money comes from, but who's, fill out those costs, so...
Because what we received, what was proposed from, from SINTA was not very much of funding.
Yeah, they have other priority routes, like the water trail, there are the water trail, the fire trial trail, which is still like urban construction. I guess sixty-five percent, sixty percent constructed throughout the entire state of Michigan. And the county, McCollum Lake County, probably two segments that had, the most is still kind of built because there's just, there's a lot of different communities and different jurisdictions and I was trying to navigate it, like, I think that's still, I owe it up for, I know, some kind of trying to get finished. The Greenways, hopefully, that next part, um, but, uh, I don't know, Bridge Way or whoever, Greenways Way. There's always other names, I don't recall. It goes, one of those goes along a shoreline up into, uh, Fort Huron, so...
Can we get the status of the Lennox? And if Lennox starts doing their portion of it, then that could allow New Haven to get up to the water trail.
Lennox was at the last council meeting and they were the ones that said that they were talking about moving it to along the railroad track, so... They've done something, they haven't had anything proposed. But at the last meeting, it was...
Last meeting. Last meeting. So there, I mean, there's no final drawings, no, no, there's all proposals.
Is the money secure? Oh. It's all, everybody's...
What SINTA had, had proposed was only ten or fifteen thousand dollars, more or less for, um, site plan, drawings.
All right. Anybody else? Motion to, I'm sure.
I have eight thirty-two, for me.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to... Thank you.